Hold order of the regular common council meeting, Monday, April 5th, 7:00 PM. Roll call.
Ron?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Next item is pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Quick confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting was noticed on Friday, April 2nd. Agenda is posted at the post office library in City Hall.
And that's for the two TIF.
Right. Items Aiden.
There's people here for license too.
Oh, yeah, that's fine, and we can leave the order if you wish. That's fine.
We can go to the license and then skip down to that.
It's not probably, it's not gonna be that long.
Yeah, not too long, is it? Okay, next item is council acceptance of agenda.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Personal appearances, anyone who wishes to speak on anything that's not on the agenda?
Oh, Ramona, can I, can you get off the agenda so I can see the council chamber?
Pardon me?
This is Sam Martino. Can you eliminate the agenda so I can see the council chambers?
Is Sydney running that up there?
You can't.
Unchair?
Can you now see all the?
I see a small window.
You know, it's up to the council. The agenda is here for the people in the room to participate, so.
Oh, okay. I'll work it out.
Okay, anyone else? Let's move on to the minutes from March 15th. Special council meeting minutes.
Motion to approve minutes of March 15th, 2021 special council meeting.
Second.
Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes. And the next one is consider approval of the minutes from March 15th, regular council meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any corrections or additions?
The, they don't reflect that the utility and safety committees gave reports. I don't know how important that is, but it's not, it's not reflected in the minutes.
It's the council's practice, right? To decide if they want that information if there wasn't, wasn't anything necessarily to report?
Correct, because they, their minutes themselves would tell what happened at the meetings, so.
Okay. I just didn't, wasn't sure. So forget it. Anyone else? Roll call.
Bronn?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Sure.
Langen?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Motion passes. Committee reports in the finance committee.
Yes, finance met this evening at 6:30. Motion to approve bills and payroll in the amount of $156,047.79.
Second.
Any questions on the bills? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve a new Class A combination liquor and beer license for, for, okay. Is this for 14 or 424? We approved it at 414 game day liquor. The 424?
424.
Okay. So if we can make that correction from finance, we had 414.
They said 44.
On this one it does.
Correct.
But our previous one, it was different. So it's for 424 game day liquor, 18 North Main Street, Agent Randip Paul Singh. I hope I pronounced that correctly. That's motion to approve.
Go ahead.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you for coming down.
Okay, motion to approve sandwich board sign for Marvin Artley to East Fulton Street.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve public event packet for Edgerton's farmers market and waive fees as well as allowing restrooms to be open during the farmers market.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve public event packet for American Legion food booth at Edgerton's farmers market and waive any fees.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I do, I just, I know some of it was already brought up at finance. They could have done this without going, they could, they just felt obligated or like doing their own.
Yeah, we informed the Legion representative, but he wanted to submit it on his own anyway.
I wouldn't, I don't think I'd approve it the way it's written because he doesn't really have much in there. Same as Candy said, it's very unclear, it doesn't tell you anything. It's, he attached, there's nothing attached. I wouldn't have bothered doing it, I don't know why he even wasted his time in our time, but.
Yeah, he could have just been a vendor with the farmers market.
Okay, well, the way, that's the only way anybody's gonna find out what he's doing because it's not.
Or come to the meeting to help explain, yeah.
Well, he could have done that, but you know, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, motion to approve bid for street milling and overlay 2021 projects to the lowest bidder, which was Payne and Dolan in the amount of $122,894.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve selection of ordinance book recodification vendor to general code based on staff recommendations.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve bid for library building tech pointing to the lowest bidder, which is Mark Deegan Masonry in the amount of $3,485.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to accept the bid for sale of multi-function Sony DVD recorder and Nuvico Lite digital video recorder in the amount of $18.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And motion to approve the amendment to City of Edgerton Resolution 22-20C, 2021 salary resolution.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one quick line. On the right side, we always put seasonal returns with favorable evaluations. Does he get an extra quarter next year if he comes back?
Have to negotiate.
You want that on the agenda for next meeting? Spend it $18?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And that's it for finance.
Thank you. We've got one thing to act on here from planning commission is to consider preliminary approval of a three lot certified survey map for parcel located at, located along 406 Colonial Circle and Elm High Drive, parcel 626999. Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Burdick?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Motion passes. Any else from planning, did we, Jim?
Yeah, yes, we did. We had a public hearing and we had a couple other things on the agenda, didn't we?
Yes, we had a public hearing.
Yeah, we did. You got it with you? I don't, I didn't bring mine with.
Anne, you got it? You want it in or for me?
No, and it's not on the agenda, so shouldn't we vote on that?
No, the rezoning was, this is, this was, if you may recall, a modification to an original rezone that was already handled by the council before. So that didn't need to come forward. The planning commission just needed to relook at that plan because they modified it.
Oh, okay.
Thanks. Of course, Jim wants to do a report on what we did, or Anne.
Well, that's what I do. Want me to do it?
Sure.
Okay, well, all right, yeah. We met and discussed the Dean Street, again, the development, the modification from the R3 general development to the planned development. And it was approved from, sooner they went from 10 duplex, previously approved for 12, went to 10 duplexes. And then the subdivision part of it, the R2 division, it went from eight to nine duplexes. And it was approved by the planning commission, as she said, just as, Ramona stated, just as a modification. There's, oh, that was, and that's, is that the only other thing we had? Yeah.
The other two are on the agenda here.
Yeah, the other ones are already done, so.
Other than those items there, everything else is over here that I planned. That would be it for planning, public works.
Public works met Monday, March 22nd, 6:00 PM. And the only thing we had on the item, our agenda, was the compost site hours. Howard had provided a log and a summary of the hours and, or the totals of people using the site last year by day, by hour, and whatnot. And he did a really good summarizing of it, and we came up with changing the hours on Saturday, Saturday only. What biggest complaint we had was not open early enough, so we changed the hours from one to, or 11 to 3 to. Nine to one, yeah. I know, I wrote that down. Oh, right, and it's a nine to one, and that was about the only thing we did. That's it, that was it.
Okay. Thank you. Fire District.
Fire District will be meeting Thursday for our first regular monthly meeting since November of last year. So we're gonna be meeting face to face, mask to mask. So I have nothing further to report on that from a meeting perspective, but we do have chief here, and I know he has stuff to report on.
Please. Activity wise, we're staying pretty busy, just a slight bit ahead of last year, but a lot of activity this weekend was pretty busy. Sunday, we were going four different directions at once, but guys are doing a good job, so that's all very positive. Probably the biggest thing, and I just wanted to make sure that I was here and could answer any questions that people might have. You may have seen, we've been approached by the Town of Milton, make sure I say that very clearly, the township of Milton, about possibly discussions related to providing fire protective services and EMS services for them. Behind that, we do know that the other townships that make up the current Milton, it's not really a district, but cooperative arrangement, are also interested in wanting to talk to us. So the township reached out to President Sherman, John Sherman, who's the president of our district board, and just asked about, can we, can we talk? And that has led to, obviously, a lot of rumors and all sorts of things going on. But literally Chairman Meyer from Milton Township will be at the board meeting on Thursday night and formally ask the board to authorize staff, so in essence Deputy Chief Ross and myself, to talk with them and see, you know, number one, what they're asking, number two, what their thoughts are, and start to try to sort, sort of sort out what this might look like. In all fairness to them, the Town of Milton has been very clear, we are not the only ones they're talking to. They have made that very clear to us, and we appreciate that, right? We understand they're looking at their options. As one town board member said when he called to ask me a question, this is probably the biggest decision they'll make as a township in the 20 years that he's been associated with town government. And I think he's right, I mean, just knowing the substantive nature of what they're wrestling with. So we're approaching it as just one of a couple options they're looking at. They're approaching it the same way, and I will do everything I can to try to communicate outside of things that shouldn't be discussed publicly. But the commitment that both Jason and I made to our department members and to anybody who will listen is that we're gonna communicate and talk about what's going on. This is the kind of thing that you just don't do in a vacuum and not communicate. Chief Ross has been through three restructurings of depart, multi-community departments in his career. Myself, on the business side, I lost track after a dozen reorganizations and consolidations and buyouts and separations and all that kind of stuff. So he and I both have a lot of experience when it comes to this, and we want to make sure we do this correctly and properly and fairly and openly. The one thing that I have said to a lot of people about this, little bit of mischaracterization in the media as to how this played out. People have talked about the fact that, that the townships and the city were negotiating with the city of Janesville for over a year, and after a year of negotiations, one of the parties decides to back out. And that sort of casts them in maybe a little disparaging light in terms of how that was portrayed. That is absolutely inaccurate in terms of what happened. They have been talking for about a year. They have been waiting for a formal proposal from the city of Janesville. They received that formal proposal, again, that was closed, so, you know, right, but they received it and within 48 hours made the decision that they wanted to seek options. So this characterization that it was going on for a year and then all of a sudden they decided to back out is just absolutely not true. They took one look apparently at what was presented to them and they decided that in literally 148 hours, so. So that's kind of where we're at, and again, I just, any questions, if anybody has any, I'll certainly try to address them, otherwise I'll give you your meeting back.
Yeah, I might just add, for you, it makes total sense, for the rest of us, not quite as clear. But we are talking about the Town of Milton, not the city of Milton.
Yes, yeah, we're trying to be very clear about that. Because I believe the city of Milton has publicly announced their plans. That was discussed at their city council meeting, I believe, last week, and that was all in open session, so that's all on record. And it does not involve, you can go look at it. I won't try to interpret what they did. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that's it for Fire District, if that's not enough.
Thanks. Next item is consider adoption of City of Edgerton Resolution 0821, approving amendment number three to tax increment to district number six. Now, does Vanda Wall want to do some background before we make a motion on this, or?
They're willing to present, so you have some additional information if you'd like.
Do we need a motion first? No? Okay. We will let Jackie do her presentation, unless Scott's on here for that.
I will take the lead on that. I, looks like I need to have screen sharing enabled in order for me to share slides. Otherwise, I'm happy to just do a verbal presentation, if that's better.
Yes, let me work on that.
Great. Well, why, why she's working on that? I'd just like to say hello, my name is Jackie Mish, I'm an associate planner with Vanda Wall and Associates. I'm joined here by Scott Harrington, he'll be.
Did you lose her mic?
She froze.
Well, now she's on here.
Looks like she froze up. We'll see if she falls out.
Just giving us more time to try and get the screen share on.
Now you should be able to, Jackie, when you're back.
I got a question on that. Oh, she went away.
She'll probably try to sign back in. Yeah, I'm guessing she's gonna, I just sent her a text telling her she was frozen, she may try to sign back in, let's see what happens. If there's a problem there, then I can kind of take it from here. If there's a problem there, then I can kind of take it from here.
Well, we can see again now, Jackie, but you are muted.
Am I unfrozen?
Yes.
All right, sorry about that, I don't know what's going on. All right, so it looks like I can share now, but somebody has to stop sharing first, is what it's telling me. There we go, excellent. All right, so. Let's see, so you should all be seeing my, my title slide? Can you all hear me?
We can hear you, but.
It's a desktop, all right, let's try that again, then.
Is that us doing that?
It might be me. Let's take a second here. I think when it kicked me out, it got confused. Great. How's that? Thanks for your patience. All right, well, dive right in. So I'd like to begin with a proposed amendment to tax increment district number six. So this is your existing TIF that covers the downtown area. This TIF was created in two thousand, and the city has since amended the boundary for this district twice. As I mentioned, this is encompassing mostly the downtown district, and the city is now proposing to add two additional properties to the district that are expected to have redevelopment potential within the life of the TIF district. So those are shown on the map in front of you. They include the former school building on Swift Street that is currently headquarters for IKI. We understand that they're planning on relocating and sort of consolidating all of their operations to their west side location. So this would be, this parcel would be available for reuse in the future. Additionally, we've included the former Chase Bank Building on Main Street. As you know, that's been vacant for quite some time, and it is definitely an infill or redevelopment opportunity. Additionally, the city is also proposing to add project costs to the project plan for this district, and that would enable for the acquisition of land and the development of a public parking lot somewhere in the district or within one half mile of the district. By adding this parking lot, we're not increasing the total level of authorized expenditures. So we'll, we'll be keeping the level of spending the same, recognizing that not all of the spending has been, we haven't reached our spending limit, so we don't need to update our spending in the project plan. For that reason, we don't need to redo all of those tables that we usually do when we create a new TIF district. And so that makes this amendment fairly straightforward and simple. We've also been working on creating a new TIF district, tid nine. So tid nine is a mixed-use TIF, so that really just means it contains a mix of uses, so industrial, commercially, or residential. Mixed-use TIFs are limited to thirty-five percent of their area, cannot exceed, cannot be dedicated to newly planted residential. In the case of this TIF district, we have much less than thirty-five percent residential, so we're not even close to that threshold. Mixed-use districts have a fifteen-year expenditure period with a twenty-year maximum life. So as you probably saw in past meetings or past, or in your meeting packet, this is the proposed boundary for the TIF district. You can see we're showing the half-mile boundary on this map as well. This TIF district is located on the west side of the city. The impetus for creating this TIF district was, or is, a planned expansion by IKI. And so you can see that they're included in the district. We've also included properties sort of southwest of the railroad tracks. Many of those parcels are actually also in your existing tid eight, but that district is coming to a close. So we were able to include some of those parcels and give them a little more life within an active TIF district. So when we create a TIF project plan, we want to make development assumptions about where we think development is likely to occur within the TIF district. So of course, the phase one of the IKI expansion was definitely included in our development assumptions. IKI has also shared that they are likely to do a second and third phase of expansion, and so we included those estimates. Additionally, we assume there was potential for some infill development along Fulton Street, specifically in front of the former Dana or Caterpillar plant. That parking lot is pretty underutilized by the current user, and there's definitely potential for a mix of residential multifamily, specifically in commercial use along that frontage. So we included some estimates for that. And then to the west of that parcel is a large vacant parcel owned by Phoenix, and that is planned for industrial. And then finally, there are a number of parcels on the other side of the railroad tracks along Elm High Drive that are vacant, currently owned by the care center, and they could have potential for multifamily development over the life of the district. So table four, which is included in the project plan, this is where we estimate the values of the development that could occur within the TIF district. And we do a phasing schedule by year throughout the life of the TIF district. And that just helps us understand when new increment might potentially come online. So in this table, you'll see that the total development increment created by the TIF could be fifty-seven, just over fifty-seven million dollars. So the timing of this is just one possible scenario. We don't know exactly when these projects will come to fruition, but this is really important for us to understand how much spending by the TIF is possible and when that might occur. This table, we certainly don't expect you to be able to read this on your, on your slide, but we do include a larger version in the, in the project plan. This is our, part of our cash flow analysis that shows the value of the district, beginning with its base value of nine point six million. And then as development increases, you'll see that the base, the value of the property in the district goes up. That also accounts for inflation as well. We also calculate tax revenues based on the new development, so that amounts to just, just over twenty-two billion over the life of the district. So understanding the revenues coming in is, is an important part of our financial feasibility study. Next, we look at costs. So the revenues that we generated on the last table, those can be used for capital projects, infrastructure projects, real estate acquisition, economic development incentives, and, and more. In this case, we have about three point four million in infrastructure costs identified, you can see those in the middle of the table. These are identified by your city engineer. Also included about five point seven million in development incentives, plus administrative and finance charges as well. So total expenditures in the project plan are about two point four million dollars. Next, we look at, at bond issuances. So how are we going to, when are we going to borrow, if we need to borrow to pay for certain expenses? So we worked on this with Baird, your financial advisor, and they determined that one borrowing is planned for the full amount of capital needed for all of these project costs on the previous slide. So three point seven five million dollars will be borrowed in twenty twenty-three at a three point two five percent interest rate to be paid back in seventeen years. Incentives, which are part of our project costs, those would be primarily pay-as-you-go deals, which is the direction most of our client communities have been going. So this is just an important exercise to do to determine that the TIF, whether or not the TIF is financially feasible. And through this exercise, we have concluded that proposed tid nine is financially feasible.
So Jack, can you go back up a slide or two, please?
Absolutely.
I'm looking for the, the interest that you had put in the previous. The finance charge is an interest here, it says three point one, but yet the one, the following one says one point five, and it has fees of a hundred and sixty. What, how, how do we reconcile those two numbers?
Yes, I, I know that those numbers don't match, and I think I'm, I'm gonna have to think about it for a second, but I do know it has to do.
Can I jump in, Jackie?
Yeah, please, Scott.
Yeah, the, the finance charges include interest paid to developers. And so the developer payment is factored on an amount that's set when the development occurs. And because it's a pay-as-you-go and paid out over time, it's paid with interest. So that developer payment of seven million includes the principal amount that would be provided to the developer as well as the interest amount. And those two interest charges together equal that finance charge shown on the other table.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Any other questions on this while I'm here? Okay, I'm gonna keep rolling. So as you may be aware, state law requires that no more than twelve percent of your community's equalized assessed value can be within a TIF district. And so we run a quick calculation whenever we amend or create a new TIF district to make sure that we're in compliance with that. So just real quickly, when we, we look at the city's total equalized assessed value, it's about four fifty-six million. Twelve percent of that would be about fifty-four million. We incorporate the increment of all the city's existing tax increment finance districts plus the proposed base value of the proposed tid nine and the proposed base value of proposed tid six, just the new parcels. And we are at about forty-six million, which is less than our twelve percent, so that, so we pass. And then finally, next steps in this process, assuming that the council approves the amendment and approves the new district, we would go to the J R B meeting on April thirteenth. And assuming that they approve the, the approval by the council, then we would submit all of our paperwork and the project plan to the Department of Revenue. Happy to take any questions.
Well, thank you. Anyone here have some question at all? I, I got one on the previous screen. The twelve percent, when does five come off there, and then those dollar amounts come off that, that page?
I, I think you cut out for a bit, but you asked about the tids that were closing?
Right, number five, when does that dollar amount come off there and reflect in their twelve percent limit? That we, we can gain that three point two percent when that comes off?
That would come off the moment the district closes, and I'm wondering if your city administrator might know that date offhand.
Two meetings ago, probably, or last meeting?
Oh.
So it has closed.
So we could even update this.
So we have a little, little more room legally to keep within the twelve percent.
Yeah, we could, we could absolutely update this to reflect the fact that tid five is now closed.
Thank you. Okay, you may have noticed that covered both of those items there as we were talking, eight and ten, nine disappeared in here, so. But if there's no other questions for Jackie or Scott, look for a motion on number eight.
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of City of Edgerton Resolution zero eight dash two one, approving amendment number three to tax incremental district number six.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes. Motion passes, and we'll move on to Consider Adoption of City of Edgerton Resolution zero nine twenty-one, approving the creation of Tax Incremental District number nine.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, thank you both for helping us out here.
Thank you.
And we will.
Have a good night.
And then we'll move on to Consider Adoption of City of Edgerton Resolution, Support of a Strong State and Local Partnership, Shared Revenue Funds, Critical Services.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Burdick?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is to Consider City of Edgerton Proclamation, Recognizing April fourth through the tenth, twenty twenty-one as National Library Week.
I'll second.
Do we need that read into the motion, Bill? Unless Kirsten wants to read it.
That's okay, but thank you.
Probably should have read them all in if we were gonna read them here, because there's other ones here too. Okay, motion and a second, any other questions? Roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Be a lot easier reading without these things on, so. Next item is to Consider City of Edgerton Proclamation, Recognizing Last Friday in April as Arbor Day.
So moved.
Second.
Couple seconds.
This morning, you want to make?
I do have a comment on this, so the, the Tree Board met earlier today, and we, wow, I think it's okay that we're gonna recognize it the last Friday in April, the fact is, is Edgerton schools are actually closed on April thirtieth. Therefore, we're going to celebrate it on Thursday, April twenty-ninth, in which we're going to have the kiddos help plant trees at Dickinson Park on, on Thursday, and the time is TBD, once we figure out when we can get them and, and walk them down there and do the ceremony.
Wonderful.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next thing is Mayor, other person, and staff reports. Tomorrow's Election Day, other than that, I have nothing else. If anyone has anything? Other than, we do not have to go into closed session, both of those items, the information we needed back did not get here, so there's no closed session. So if you have anything else back on the, up above item, bring it on up. Otherwise, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
No.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.